The council, the Budget and Finance Committee recommendation is $5,000 short of the mayor's budget at $45,000. I think there's a concern and a desire of the council to find that $5,000. So this, this meeting is in part trying to accomplish that. And particularly honing in on the city clerk's election process for neighborhood councils. So item number one.
Item number one is a motion, Alec Conreus, relative to delay of fiscal year 2009-10, neighborhood council elections, proposed cost to conduct neighborhood council elections, and the feasibility of neighborhood councils receiving a credit toward city services to use and pay for city services in related matters.
Darrell, I don't think your mic is on. But your voice, there it is, okay.
Say it again?
No. You have a great voice.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I could ask the city clerk folks to step forward and... The very first thing I want to do is go back to the decision by the city council to have the city clerk conduct the elections to create a unilateral approach to conducting those elections. It was my understanding that the cost for that was going to be $1.3 million. Tell us how we... In the mayor's budget, the figure was $4 million, and I never really did get a handle on what all that was. So maybe somebody could first explain to me what the, what the budget is for the city clerk in terms of this year, and then we'll go from there relative to neighborhood council elections.
Mr. Conreus, if I may make an opening statement, I just wanted to introduce myself, June Legme, City Clerk. My staff is with me Arlene Taylor, who is our Elections Chief. Behind me are Glenn Robison of Admin Services and Holly Walcott, Executive Officer. To summarize his background, to state the obvious, the neighborhood, I'm sorry, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment handled neighborhood council elections originally. There were some problems. The council subsequently changed procedures so that the city clerk would handle neighborhood council elections. The challenge has been to apply a standardized election process as practiced by the City Clerk's Office, a professional election organization, to a non-standardized voting criteria which each individual neighborhood council possesses. Staff will explain to you in detail why the original $1.3 million estimate made back in 2007 was under-calculated, and further additional options for trimming the cost, and with each trim, the accompanying risks which will be the council's prerogative to approve or not approve. In answer to how we came up with the original $1.3 figure, I am going to turn it over to Arlene.
The $1.3 million figure that was referenced in the October 2007 report was prior to our conducting the, even the pilot portion of neighborhood council elections.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
In October 2007? I'm not familiar with that. The figure I'm talking about was reported at the committee when we made the decision last year.
The decision to move the responsibility of elections from Dunn to the city clerk was made prior to our conducting the elections in March in 2008.
Mm-hmm.
And the action, I think, was finalized in December of 2007.
Oh, December of 2000, was it that long ago?
It was, yes. One point extra, City Clerk's office. Yes, that's when the council adopted the NCRC recommendation related to the elections.
Man.
Yeah, it was a while ago. And then, and since that time, we've conducted the pilot project where we conducted, within a three-month period, the elections, 22 neighborhood council elections. And from that, we gained valuable experience, which we then applied to our experience, you know, conducting other elections, and that's how we came up with our initial budget request. But the $1.3 million was very preliminary. It was based on, partly based on how the elections had been conducted in the past and, and on the cost information we had that time. But it did exclude several key items, which was the cost of providing vote by mail to, providing that option, you know, to every neighborhood council election. It didn't include the cost of a second mailing. It didn't include the full cost that we've had to pay for the use of the facilities that we use for both our stakeholder meetings, informational meetings, and for the election day. So...
Should I wait?
Okay. So, so even when we conducted the elections, we ended up spending more than we had anticipated because of these unknowns. But that, I think, is why it appears that our budget request seems to have taken people by surprise, because I think they were anticipating a much lower figure.
Well, frankly, $4 million is about equivalent to the entire Dunn operation, including the neighborhood councils. And if it cost the United States of America that much to conduct an election, we would go bankrupt in a second. Maybe some people would argue we're already in bankruptcy, but yes, it took us by surprise. I mean, that's, that's an understatement. What, in your 2008, 2009 budget allocation, what was the, what was the amount for the neighborhood council elections?
We were given roughly, at that time, we were able to cobble together monies that were underutilized.
What was the budget allocation?
So it was like $650,000 total, and a portion of that was...
That, 2008, 2009?
Oh, I'm sorry, for the municipal election?
Yes, no, for the neighborhood council elections.
The neighborhood council elections were conducted in the early part of 2008. It was, we received an interim appropriation of approximately $650,000. So it was actually the 2007, 2008 fiscal year. So the 2008...
But that's not my question. My question was, what was the budget allocation for 2008, 2009?
Yeah, okay. Holly Walcott, for, for this current fiscal year and neighborhood council elections, there were no money.
There was no money allocated?
Not for neighborhood council elections.
Okay, so we allocated $650,000 for 2007, 2008.
For the 2008 neighborhood council elections.
Assuming that, that we were going to double it in 2009, 2010. Because it was 1.3.
Right. I, again, these, that was probably the assumption.
Okay, I'll tell you, that's, that's what my assumption was then.
Right.
But that was part of the discussion. We discussed it very...
Right. They conducted 22...
I can't believe it was two years ago, or a year and a half ago, but time flies. So you did not receive an allocation in 2008 and 2009 for the neighborhood council elections. The, the idea was that if, now here's... Okay, so $650,000 was merely allocated to finish up the elections for, for 2007, 2008. The figure for, the cost figure was 1.3 million for an entire year, and that was because the city clerk intended to add positions on a fixed basis, on an annual basis. So you're telling me to date, you have not added any positions?
That does not include fixed costs. Fixed costs were added in '07, '08, and they've been, become part of the base.
Fixed, fixed costs were added?
In '07, '08, and they've become part of the base.
But you said there was no budget allocation.
No additional budget allocation.
2009, 2010.
Because it became, became, became part of the base in '07, '08.
So if they were fixed costs, what happened to them?
Well, the, the 25 staff members, the staff, the Election Division, that, there were five positions added in '07, '08.
Right.
There are now 25 staff positions. So in '07, '08, there were 25 staff positions. This year, there's 25 staff positions, and next year, there'll be 25. So the current, the staff, there have been no additional allocations. It was just a base staff from year to year.
But you said there was zero allocation in 2009, in the 2008, 2009 budget?
For neighborhood councils specifically.
If, I don't, um...
Explain it to me.
Because we're going through all these reports, can I just say that when we had, I think when the idea was initially floated for the elections to be moved to the city clerk's office?
Mm-hmm.
The, kind of a deal, or, or the way it was phrased, or the way it was presented, was that we could conduct these elections in the year that we're not conducting the municipal elections, as long as we were given five additional staff members. And that was two, two requirements. But that was the key. Because, and, and the proposal was that then these five additional staff members could assist us when we conduct the municipal election, because we really needed additional staff. And what we did find in the past elections is they, they were, they were really key for our being able to conduct the election at a more reasonable pace.
You're talking about the municipal election?
Yes. And so, and then in exchange, then during the off-election season, you would have the, the core election staff assist the neighborhood council staff in conducting the neighborhood council elections. So that was the trade-off.
Absolutely. That's what I remember.
Right.
But that would mean that the five positions, the fixed assets are incorporated in the 2008, 2009 budget. And when I asked, what's the allocation, you said zero.
Sir, you asked for the neighborhood council election specifically, and they were not added specifically for the neighborhood council election that year. They were added, they're, they're continuing fixed asset costs on an ongoing basis. For the '08, '09 year, they were for the municipal election.
But you have to understand, it's coming out of the neighborhood council system. And it doesn't seem the city clerk is appreciating that the neighborhood council system is paying for those additional five positions on the off-years. And there needs to be an appreciation for that, because it's coming out of their budget. And so moving forward, so you, so you're telling me you have, how, what's, what's the allocation for those five positions?
Yeah.
Okay, the ones that flip from municipal to neighborhood council elections. What is the allocation? What are the costs? What are the fixed costs for that?
We're all doing it. We're all working on neighborhood council elections in the non-municipal, municipal election year. And during the municipal election, we're all working on those. So we've just switched operations so that we're focusing on those.
What are the new costs that, that are associated with the neighborhood council allocation of $650,000?
We're estimating $450,000.
How much?
We're estimating $450,000.
$450,000. So the addition to the city clerk's office is $450,000. And then you've, you had asked the mayor for an additional $3.55 million to operate the neighborhood council election.
Okay.
Well, how does that break down?
Well, Glenn Robison, Admin Services for City Clerk. The included in our base budget is now those five positions, as you indicated, and we utilize those on neighborhood council election years as well as municipal election years. In addition to that amount, our budget request for the current year started with an amount of $4.9 million.
$4.9?
Yes, that was our original submission. And in that, we included Assistant General Manager level position to oversee all of elections, both elections and neighborhood council, and a programmer analyst to help us program new, new applications that would apply to elections. Since that time, in the proposed, the mayor's proposed budget, the mayor made several modifications to our request, and they reduced it down to...
Four million?
It was the four million. Uh, 4.5 million, was it?
Four million dollars. The sales were...
Okay.
There's four million dollars in the inappropriate balance.
And we were able to attain...
Which is still an increase of 2.55.
It's still an increase, yes. Since that time, we have had several meetings with the Budget and Finance Committee, and included in that large request was things that were not done before, and included all the notification to every possible stakeholder in the city in a generic mailer, which costs about $600,000, and then a targeted mailing, which costs about $500,000. And this was an outreach portion of that request. It also included a element for full availability of vote by mail if a voter wanted to take advantage of that. Since that time, the report that you have before you, we have scrubbed all of those accounts several times, and we have now deleted several things in that $4 million request to get us down to 2.2 million. What we have deleted is...
Wait a minute. What do you mean deleted? You have added.
Really?
I want to know what you added from your current allocation. How many staff positions did you include in next year's budget?
None.
With, with the budget committees, with the budget committees, 2.2, what is it, 2.2 now?
Right.
Okay, so it's 2.2. You're currently at $450,000. I want to know what's the difference? What is included in there?
The, the $450,000 of those five positions that were approved in the budget, that is the only staff that we have.
Okay.
Since that became a part of our base, we do not request that again in this budget request. It is part of our base, is a part of the program to use those positions efficiently. We use them on the municipal year, election year.
So it's not included in the 2.2?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, so what is included in the 2.2? Which is additional money beyond what the council anticipated.
We are down to that amount now in that report.
Mr. Conreus, I think it's important to note that the $1.3 million that was promised, projected back in 2007 is an erroneous figure. It is an erroneous figure because it didn't, did not take into account essential components which we discovered to be necessary after running the pilot project in 2007.
I'm happy to have the discussions with you, but it's not an erroneous figure, because that's the figure that was budgeted.
Really?
So it's, it's not an erroneous figure. That's what the allocation was. What, what, what you should have said is that 650 represented half a year, and we get to the 1.3 million because it's double the cost for implementing those five staff members through the course of a whole year. I'm grant you that. But I want to know what the difference is between the 1.3 million and the 4 million. But right now, we're talking about an allocation of, of, of the 2.2, which is, was not anticipated cost. And 2.2 is, is, is double what, what we anticipated, and it's half of what you wanted. You know, so we're, we're not speaking in the same language. So the city clerk needs to speak our language, not your language. What I want to know is what does that 2.2 million include?
It includes staff costs, vote by mail?
Actually, what we should do is add the 1.3 million into this budget item, because it's, it's coming out of the, the neighborhood council system. But, but okay, so what's in the 2.2 that is, is absolutely essential?
The 2.2 is a reduced figure from the 4.1, which included vote by mail, staff costs, facility costs. We were able to move the 4.1 to the 2.2 by cutting out the mailers, by cutting down system costs.
I, you're, you're doing it backwards, June. You're saying you cut out, but you don't have it. It's never been formally allocated. I'm asking what, with 2.2, what are you adding to the system? Because that money was not anticipated.
The 1.3.
Exactly.
Right.
You already got the 1.3. You already have the 1.3, because it's incorporated into your other budget. What are you adding in, in new, new dollars to this system? And that's what the 2.2 represents.
Okay. Should we, should we go to Attachment B? Maybe that's easier.
I'm looking at the attached, this attachment here.
Attachment B?
Maybe you want to talk about it? I don't know.
Attachment B, please?
Attachment B.
Where's Attachment B?
Oh, probably this one?
Who has Attachment B?
Oh, Attachment A, let's see, maybe it's here.
Uh, the left.
Here it is. I got it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, B, B is the all vote by mail option, Holly.
Okay, Attachment A.
Where do you see Attachment B? Oh, Attachment B.
Now, let's understand, the, none of this was allocated this year.
Right.
And none of this was allocated the year we decided to shift this over to the city clerk. So this is all new money. And we keep talking about cuts. No, you added money to the budget. Two point, and, and you requested 4.9 million. And these are unanticipated costs from the council's perspective. So yes, we were shocked. So I want to know, line by line, what it is we're adding to this neighborhood council system in addition to the 1.3 million that we gave you a year and a half ago?
Okay. So shall I go through and explain the second page of Attachment A? And if that doesn't answer your question...
I just want to know what the 2.2 represents.
Please let me go. Okay, so basically, it's a, the second page of Attachment A shows the breakdown of our requests by unit, because the...
Neighborhood council unit, 296,000. This is in addition to the current budget. So what is it we're getting for 296,000 that we couldn't do last time?
And by unit, does that mean each neighborhood council?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. Our election division, we break down into sections or units. So the neighborhood council unit is the group that will be responsible, or rather, is responsible for meeting with the neighborhood councils. They've been, we actually started that process already since we consolidated the May election onto the counties. So we were able to get an early start. They've started meeting with them. We've had a series of what we call edge meet...
Wait a minute. They're already doing it?
We started.
So they're existing?
Well, the staff exists because they're part of our base. You know how the, the staffing...
So then this, we don't need this money?
The additional money that's requested doesn't, this is like expense monies, overtime...
I want to know what the 296,000 is.
So the 296 is the money that the neighborhood council unit will need to finalize each neighborhood council's election procedure?
Explain finalize to me. I want to know what we're paying for.
Okay. So each neighborhood council has a bylaw.
Right.
Has bylaws when they become certified. And they also have election procedures by which their elections were previously conducted. A lot of the election procedures were, there was a lot of variance between them, and a lot of them need to have changes to be in compliance with a lot of the recommendations the NCRC had made. So we worked through that process with the first 22 we had done in 2008, but we need to meet with the balance of the neighborhood councils and go through that process, where we sit down, go through their election procedures with them, make sure it includes all...
What does the 296,000 pay for?
Staff. Staff?
No.
No.
Because we have the staff.
I want, I want...
Thank you.
Okay.
Director answers to me, please. I'm asking you a question. What does the 296,000 pay for?
It is paying for the cost of the facilities that we will need to, that we sometimes need to pay when we schedule the meetings, either regional meetings or, generally for the regional meetings, because they're larger meetings. It's paying for the vehicle costs, because the staff must go out into the field to meet with the neighborhood council.
But you already have that?
No, we, we don't have that.
Well, what did your five people do last time?
The five, last time as in 2008?
Yeah.
We were given, that was what the funding that was provided then was used for, but that funding went away at the end of the year.
It was...
You know, we're a little different from...
It was $650,000 was allocated.
Right. And then when, and...
You just said earlier, your folks said that it was incorporated into the budget.
The staff. The funding for the staff, so the salaries.
So then my question is, how did they drive out to the community last time?
Using the, the funding that was provided, the $650,000 figure that was referenced, using the, that funding.
That funding was incorporated into your budget?
No.
No. Only the staff costs. The 650 did not include the five staff people.
Okay. What is the cost for the five staff people?
450.
Huh?
450.
450.
And that was not included in the 650.
Okay. So there was 150,000 allocated for other things?
650 was allocated.
But 200,000 then was allocated for other things?
650 was allocated for other things. The whole, the whole allocation was the 650 plus the five staff. But the 450, it was 450 plus the five staff, right?
We, we received five months' worth of funding for the staff.
Okay. Which was how much?
Uh, 200,000 roughly.
And the remainder was spent on what?
Things like facility fees, the cost of the mailers, which includes the printing, the postage, um, what did I say, the facility fees of...
I don't understand the facility fees.
We do a lot of our work through the use of as-needed staff, because...
Okay, I'm talking about neighborhood council unit.
Oh, within that unit?
Yeah.
That unit alone was just a portion, they were allocated just a portion of the cost that was spent.
I know that, obviously. I want to know what it was.
What their portion of the cost.
How much did you spend on the neighborhood council unit line item, like you have it here? What did you spend last time?
Okay. So that, when we initially did the pilot project in 2008, we were under a time crunch, so we didn't structure the elections in the way we normally would, as we're doing for the 2010 proposed funding. So if you look on the left half of the second page of Attachment A, you'll see how the funding was provided in terms of a breakdown of the expense items.
Okay.
So you see that? And then...
So for facilities rental costs, you have $3,000.
That's what we spent.
Right.
Okay. So the first column is the actual expenditures. The second column is just a straight-line projection...
And what you're going to need?
Based on increasing the number of elections from 22 to 95. Straight line.
Okay. So this 200, of this 296,000, 14,700 is for facilities.
15, 15,000 is for facilities.
Okay, what's the rest for?
Okay, so there are things like the mailings...
The mailings are included in the neighborhood council unit?
No.
The 296,000?
Oh, I see. We can go back and do, try to do a functional breakout. When we submitted our budget request, we structured it by section as opposed to individual line item.
I have no idea what that means.
Okay.
I'm asking what the 296,000 is for.
Okay.
So far, we got 14,000 for facilities rental costs.
For the record, Councilmember Zine and Han have joined Councilman Alec Conreus.
Thank you, Mrs. Zine.
Okay. The 296,000 will provide an assistant for each of the project coordinators. The assistants will be responsible for assisting them...
Sorry, for what? How much?
154,000 roughly.
154 what? Project?
For assistance to the permanence, the five permanent staff members of the neighborhood council unit.
Are these permanent or temporary?
This funding, the 154,000, is for temporary staff to assist them.
For staff.
So it is for staff?
So that's staff.
Yes. Because we hire as-needed staff to assist them.
So you don't need that the subsequent year?
That's correct. So the way our budget...
So if we delayed the election, we wouldn't need that portion in this budget whatsoever?
If we delayed the, if we didn't conduct the elections at all in 2009, 2010? Right.
Uh, how, so that is for, how many staff did you say?
That was for the five...
Five assistants?
Five assistants.
And they're temporary?
They're temporary.
How, are they working 12 months?
They will be working nine months.
Nine months? Why do they have to be around for so long?
Because they will be assisting the project coordinators who are meeting with the neighborhood councils to finalize their election procedures. They'll be going out in the field to, well, what we had planned to do was have stakeholder candidate information meetings where we would be handing out the candidate filing forms and then processing them.
Okay, now you did this at 22 elections with five staff people.
And 20 as-needed staff.
Oh, so the 650,000 included 20 as-needed staff as well?
And the assistance of the...
And that wasn't included in the ongoing budget?
No, no.
Just the five full-time staff members for that, and I know your paper's getting filled with numbers. The five full-time staff members, approximately 450,000 dollars. That is the amount that's carried over on the budget. All of the as-needed staff are just temporary and only used during that neighborhood council election year and is not carried over to the following year.
But they were not used for nine months before the last election? We didn't even have nine months. So why do you think you need them for nine months?
The amount of time we had available to conduct the elections in 2008 were, it was entirely insufficient for us to do a good job. It was, we ran into a lot of problems because we were rushing.
What is, what is not lost on this chairman is that we had a follow-up report to the election process, and nowhere was it ever indicated that you were going to ask for a quadrupling of your budget. At what point did you discover that you were going to do that? And at what point did you feel like you had a need to tell this committee? The answer to the last question is obviously never.
I believe that the intent of that submission was to show you the costs for a neighborhood council election proposal that included maximum outreach to all of the stakeholders in the neighborhood.
That wasn't my question. My question was related to the report that you gave back after the election that said everything was fine.
I don't believe we...
No, it didn't say everything, I mean, I...
You said there were some tweaks that needed to be done.
Well, I think in our after-action report, we listed all the items that didn't go well and all the things that we would need to do to improve the process. And the things, things like starting earlier, meeting more with the neighborhood council, those are the kinds of things that we put in our after-action report. We began the development of the budget after that.
Okay, so you conducted the election for 22 neighborhood councils with five people, with some assistance of municipal staff?
Yeah.
I'm not convinced that you need five assistants for nine months. Can you give me a more pared-down version of what you would need?
A pared-down version. I think that these five assistants are critical because it's really important for us to maintain good communications with the neighborhood councils. And in the last, when we did the 22, we tried to get by with having just one assistant supporting all five of them. And it was just too much of a workload for one person to handle. And we felt a more reasonable approach would be to give each neighborhood council project coordinator their own assistant who could assist them not only in the development of the neighborhood council election procedures, but also in communicating with them and, you know, providing constant contact because the project coordinators are out in the field most of the time.
What's the pared-down version?
Fewer staff, I'm assuming, I mean? We could go back and look at that.
No, I'm asking right now. We don't have time.
Okay.
I mean, if you want me to make the decision, I will, I will make a motion to the council.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, I mean, and I think that what we're struggling with is the efficiency of the city clerk's office to do neighborhood councils. But we're also struggling with the fact that neighborhood councils have been doing this for, you know, seven years with volunteers. And maybe there were some problems, and there certainly were problems, and this committee heard a ton of problems with elections. But for instance, just in this idea of an assistant, would that be a position that we could maybe partner with each neighborhood council on? Could they determine an election volunteer to work with the city clerk's office for everything you're talking about, the communication, the setting it up? Or is there anybody in Dunn? You know, I know we moved some staff members from Dunn, but is there, is there any way we could partner? Can the clerk's office partner either with Dunn or each neighborhood council to find this assistant position?
Right.
You know, as a volunteer?
Yes.
I think that's what we're struggling with. We kind of went from all volunteer to this, you know, very expensive way of doing it. And I think what I need to know is, is there a hybrid that the city clerks feels comfortable with, you know, being efficient, being accountable, being transparent, but maybe a hybrid version of using some volunteers in some of these paid positions? That's what I'd like to know if you could come back with.
Our plan going into the 2010 election cycle is to work with one designated volunteer from each of the neighborhood councils to really improve and facilitate the communication. That was part of the plan because that was what was happening.
In lieu of these paid assistants?
In addition to.
See, I would like, I think what we're going to need to see is in lieu of those paid assistants. That's just one area. I mean, I think the chair is wanting us to pare down a lot more than that.
Let's, let's look at the reality here. We're talking about an average voter turnout of about 400. Is that correct?
Voter turnout?
Yeah, it was 22,000 or...
We're estimating 35,000 voters for the 2010, and that's just an estimate.
Estimate for 90 elections would be about...
400-ish?
400, right? Interesting. At a cost of 2.2 million?
The amount of work that...
That, that is the highest expenditure for a vote in the history of the United States.
No, all elections, all elections are pretty expensive.
But not that expensive.
18 million dollars for what we had turnout of this year. So, I mean, what's our turnout, what was our turnout at the...
Go down that road. Tell me what the cost per voter was and compare it to this.
I'd have to know what the total number of voters were.
I have the vote.
Well, the point is that the original proposal, the 1.3 million dollars that came from the city clerk's office, would afford 13,684 dollars per neighborhood council election. Your proposal is closer to 30,000. So I am concerned about where, why the budget got tripled from the original promise.
Well, I believe right now that it's, it's pretty much doubled from the original. We're now at 2.2 million dollars. And what that includes is all the facilities, all of the...
You're not going to get that. So we better get real, real fast because we could lose it all. Because I don't see any justification for any of it right now. I want to know...
Well, certainly an option is to return it back to, back to the way it was.
No, that's not what I'm talking about. Because we still have those five positions. If you want to return those?
No.
Okay, then let's get real. What I want to know on this, if, how much of these 2.2 million, because we don't have a lot of time, I've got to get back to council. How much of this 2.2 million is fixed costs?
Fixed costs as...
Fixed costs meaning that you have to have them 365 days of the year?
None of it.
None of it? Okay. That's good news. Of the, in order to conduct the neighborhood council elections, how much of these costs would be needed before the election? And how soon before the election, or how long before the election are they needed?
Well, we anticipated receive, well, naturally, we anticipated receiving the funding July 1. And in normal situations, that's when we would have begun work. Though this particular, particular year, because we had the opportunity and because it was the first year, we thought we would be doing the whole 95, we got an early start and we started working on it. So normally, we would have started July 1.
Okay, you started working with the five positions you had and other positions that were available? Municipal positions?
Right now, it's the five.
Okay. What I'm trying to get at is if we move the election to beyond July 1st, we're still going to conduct it in 2010. But if we move it beyond July 1st, I need to know how much of these costs are needed before that. Some of it, we don't need until the subsequent year. But what do we need before?
Okay. So depending which month you would anticipate moving the election dates to, because right now, we're looking at March, April, May, June. Say you wanted to slide them back four months. I mean hypothetically. We could give you a breakdown, because we, when we budget, we determine our staffing requirements on a month-by-month basis. So we could determine what portion of that would fall within next fiscal year versus the following fiscal year. But more importantly is, we truly, truly can't do the neighborhood council elections during a municipal election year. I mean, that's what the main problem is for us.
Why's that?
Because we have 25 full-time staff members who have to conduct an election for over 2.4 million voters, or potential voters. And we generally start up even before the fiscal year because what we need to do in order to get the work done is to find qualified as-needed staff that we bring onboard each election. We start fresh. We recruit them, we hire them, we train them, and they become our supervisors, they become our workers, and the process starts early. Candidate filing begins in November. By that time, all the documents need to be in place, all the, all the precinct lines need to have been, we have a lot of pre-work.
What is poll worker recruitment?
Yeah, I'll ask that.
Traditionally, well, of course, in a municipal election, they're recruiting polls. In this case, we were going to use that section's expertise because they also do poll worker training, to do the training for the poll workers that will be working the NC elections. So their focus this time, we kept the title because that's the section name, but they would be concentrating on training staff and providing materials in the polling place for their use.
Okay, can you break down the 287,000 dollar figure? This is just for poll worker recruitment? Doesn't say anything about training? I'm assuming that's incorporated in there? Is it poll worker recruitment and training? So what are you spending 287,000 dollars on?
That section will be hiring three staff members who will initially be assisting in developing the training materials, but then will be the leads.
I thought, I thought you said there was a unit already?
Yeah, I'm sorry. So our units are mostly comprised of one manager, and the work of the units are done by the as-needed staff that we hire. So when I say hire, I'm sorry, I mean the temporary workers.
Okay. So it's for three...
Three temporary staff at a cost of 130,000 roughly.
How temporary are they? How long are they going to be working?
These are on top of the five temporary assistants.
No, each section will hire their own temporary staff to assist them. Because for the most part, each section, except for the NC unit which has five permanent staff members, each section has one permanent staff member.
Yeah, but you talked about the five temporary assistants to the five permanent.
Yes.
Okay, so these three temporary staff for...
Don't you think in the neighborhood council pool that other neighborhood council members from other areas would volunteer to, to conduct an objective election? Why, why do we have to turn all this money?
Do we, I'm sorry, could you rephrase that? Or could you restate that?
The system of neighborhood council members, 90 neighborhood councils with an average of 30 elected members, that's, what's that? 2, 2,700 people. You don't think that a member from the Mission Hills neighborhood council would volunteer time to conduct, help conduct a poll service in order to get the same trade-off in another area so that it would be objective? Why do we have to hire people to do that? Can't we just ask the neighborhood council, that liaison that, that we have with the neighborhood council to identify, you know, five poll workers?
I think, I mean, I think that's what I was saying too. Is there a way that city clerk's office can come back with the hybrid version of using the huge pool of volunteers that are associated with neighborhood councils, plus your professional paid staff, to lower this 2.2 million dollars to, to back to the 1...
That's just one, that's only what, 150,000, 130,000 you said?
150.
Okay, there's, so there's 150 there. I think you can find volunteers in the system.
Yeah.
What about public services? 359,000 for public, what is public services?
Okay, so public services will be conducting the candidate filing. So if candidates want to come to the front counter to file their documents...
Yeah, wait, wait a minute. The candidates for neighborhood councils have to come downtown to file?
They can come downtown. We will also be having regional meetings out in the various areas of the city where the front, the public counter people will be available to conduct the filing there.
Wait a minute. Why can't they conduct their own filing?
Okay. The way the process is currently set up is that if you want to run for a particular office, you would need to indicate, first of all, your stakeholder status. And then certain neighborhood councils have additional requirements for candidates running for office. So we have to verify they meet those qualifications. And then we verify through documentation.
Right.
So that's, so you're asking why the neighborhood councils couldn't do that themselves?
I understand why that, that isn't done. But what is the 359,000 spent on?
This is public services?
I'm only getting a sampling here because we're not going to be done, so... I'm beginning to wonder what those five people are doing if everybody else is doing all the work.
There's a lot of work, maybe. Well, you know, a lot of it is in making sure that those procedures are comprehensive and then actually developing the process. Can I just share with you how complicated some of the neighborhood council elections are?
I know, I know.
No, you, you shared that with me in your report the last time.
We know.
But you didn't share that it was going to triple the cost.
Okay. So for public services, and let me just add, for each of the sections, our plan was that all of the as-needed workers and all of the permanent staff would be out on election day assisting at the polls. So that's just part of the plan. I'd say the bulk of the costs are in salaries, and it's 275,000 for...
Can I ask, how many neighborhood council members are here? Can you raise your hands? Now, let me ask this question. How many of you would be willing to volunteer time in another neighborhood council to help the city clerk run an election?
On election day. But these are the staff that are working in the office, conducting the work to prepare for those elections. So we're talking about every day for nine months.
Right. Right.
Mm-hmm. The public services folks?
So, ten staff. Over, um, so...
Ten, ten staff?
For...
How many, how many, and, and you said, okay...
Well, for six months, excuse me.
These are the people that do what?
They will be, um, accepting...
The applications.
The applications.
Ten people are needed to accept twenty-seven hundred applications. And then multiply that times two.
We're talking about, um, each of the stakeholders also register, so we can determine what races are eligible to vote on. We will do that also at the stakeholder candidate information meetings, and we will do that at the front counter.
Right.
So they're assisting in that process too, so we're talking more like potentially thirty-five thousand people.
Thirty-five thousand.
We're estimating.
Thirty-five thousand.
Based on our experience with the twenty-two. We'll have a better feel for it after the first round.
Okay, we're not gonna finish this, so I'm, I'm, but...
I think we're on to something.
But we're on to something, and we're gonna drill down. And I hope the city clerk drills down because I want a definition for every one of these expenditures, a detailed, itemized explanation for each one of these.
I have one question, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Poll worker recruitment, two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, what?
Okay, yeah. And I apologize for that. We should probably change our section titles. We, we maintain the section titles that we use in the municipal election.
Right.
So our poll worker recruitment section is responsible for not only the recruitment, but the training of our poll workers, and their focus for the NC elections will be in developing the training for the people that will be, um, at each of the elections.
Two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars?
Yes.
How difficult are the elections?
They are very difficult.
Well, don't they just have the person's name for the particular neighborhood councils?
Some of the neighborhood councils have over twenty different races with different qualifications for every race and different requirements as to who can vote for them.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we, uh, we're not, as I said, we have to get to a council meeting. I have a whole bunch of cards. I'm not gonna hold my colleagues to, to all those cards if you, if you do have to go. But, um, uh, I think we're gonna need another special meeting. The budget is going to, um, arrive in the council...
Monday.
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 It's gonna take a week for that.
Is the, is the budget, um...
They allocate all next week. So we wouldn't have...
What time, what, but the...
Ten, ten to five, Monday.
Ten to five, Monday. Hmm.
Well, this is gonna take a couple hours, though.
Yeah, uh, what I'd like to do is, uh...
Back nine, about four in?
Well, Tuesday, we start at ten, Wednesday, we start at ten, Thursday, we start at...
Wait a minute, you said the budget arrives on Monday?
I was told Monday we start.
Monday, ten to five.
Okay, we start deliberating, so...
But we just presented today.
Okay.
But we start deliberating on Monday.
But we start deliberating Monday.
Uh, what about later this, what about continuing the meeting till later?
Later today?
Yeah.
What time today?
We just, we just don't know today. They've told, I mean, Bernard told us to block out all day today.
I don't even know anything about the budget. Well, I wanna, I wanna have the city clerk have an opportunity to, to drill down deeper, and then I want...
Why don't you come back Monday morning then?
You can. But I just wanted to see what they were...
Come on, I come from San Pedro. Hard to get here by eight. I come from San Pedro.
Yeah, you can do, you have to post a notice.
We don't say on call, Mr. Chair?
Who's bringing the cops?
No, no, this is, you're just adjourned, especially me, but you have to post a notice on the door, if that's what you want.
I, I got other things today. We don't know what time council's open.
Huh?
Can we adjourn and reconvene on Monday?
Yeah. Oh, one more.
Can we continue till Monday?
You can continue till Monday, but you have to re, you'll have to repost.
We have, well, we have to repost anyway.
Right, well, yeah.
Okay, then, um, uh, nine o'clock on Monday?
About eight o'clock.
Yeah.
Eight o'clock?
Oh, man. Eight-thirty. Eight-thirty. You guys started eight, oh.
I'm not used to roll calls.
Six fifteen in the morning.
Um, I, I'm hopeful that we, we can, uh, uh...
Make it direct again.
We can make considerable progress, uh, by...
I think they can.
Pardon me? Uh, by Monday. Uh, so I'm, nine o'clock on Monday, um...
I thought it was eight thirty.
Nine.
No, I, I...
Now it's nine?
You know, some of us have to take our kids to school, you know.
I have, I have public safety at nine.
You guys are gonna have a committee meeting on Monday?
I have public safety at nine AM.
Okay, we, eight-thirty is fine with me. Uh, eight, eight-thirty? And eight-thirty on Monday, uh, and what I'm asking the city clerk to do is hone in on what are the absolute essentials, um, out of this two point two. Uh, now, I am gonna be moving to postpone the elections until after July first to drive as much savings into, uh, this year's budget as possible. Um, it is gonna, it's going to take, uh, additional, uh, concentrated effort from the city clerk, uh, to conduct the, uh, two elections, processes. Um, but it's an emergency.
Yeah.
And I think it's necessary. So with that, I'm gonna, uh, ask, uh, the city clerk to work with us to, to, uh, find, uh, a more reasonable, uh, solution. Uh, at this time, Linda Lux, I apologize to some of the folks. I think these cards got a little mixed up, so I may not be going in the order that they came in. Yes, Ms. An and, and Mr. Yanez may leave. Uh, Linda Lux, please.
Hi, Linda Lux.
I'm gonna give everybody one minute. We have to go very quickly because I have a council meeting that's scheduled right now, okay? Thank you very much.
Okay. I'm Linda Lux, President of the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, and I wanted to speak to two things. One is, postponing the elections would really be a, not the right way to go. Some of us have already had our elections postponed. I'm the Vice President of the Venice Neighborhood Council, and it kind of just looks bad for us to, it looks like we're holding onto power. So if there's a way not to postpone them, it would be better for us. I, I love the fact that the neighborhood councils have been showing up en masse. You see what a great system...
Okay, I'm gonna have, I need you to all be quiet.
And I wanted to thank you for your support and for looking at the budget with a fine-tooth comb as it relates to the city clerk's elections. Just know that, in my opinion, and many of my board members, the, Dunn has given up too much. And in particular, I'm concerned with the executive assistant for our board. Where we, we meet all over the city every, every month. We're the only board that meets at night. We need our own dedicated staff person, um, particularly in these times of changing elections, and I, I urge you to reinstate that position if you're gonna take money out of what's proposed from given up by Dunn. Um, and thank you for, for everything you do.
Okay, Linda, you submitted two cards. Lisa, Lisa Baca?
Lisa Baca with the Greater Echo Park Elysian Neighborhood Council. First, thank you very much for standing with the neighborhood councils and trying to restore the forty-five thousand dollars to our budgets. Um, we are all volunteers. We are committed to do whatever it takes to make it work. We don't care what it looks like. If we can save our funding in our budgets and we can move this election and make it work, these economic times have created challenges and opportunities that we are all rising to do things that are not normal. So we support moving the election for the August and restoring our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Rusty Miller? Or Millar? Is it Millar?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Rusty Millar, Silver Lake Neighborhood Council. Um, we haven't taken action on this, so it's not, it's not our position. But I guess one of the questions here is, you know, what, on this motion, what the city clerk's talking about is, you know, what cost is there to democracy? And, um, I think that it, it sounds to me like they're trying to maneuver this whole neighborhood council election out of the budget completely in a way that they make it so expensive that you look at it as something that can't be done, to be able to, you know, cut the funding. We've been putting on neighborhood council elections for, uh, five years at, at pretty much our own expense with some help from the city clerk. Part of the problem is the outreach. We need assistance from the city clerk as far as the database to get information out to everybody in our community, and I think everybody's the same way. Elections in America are right. They may have been going back to the SNAP Act of seventeen sixty-five. And, you know, that led to some kind of conflict in seventeen seventy-five. So I urge you to, you know, support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Rusty. Francisco Torero?
Francisco Torero, Treasurer, Greater Echo Park Elysian Neighborhood Council. Uh, I would agree with delaying the elections a little bit to look into it, but I also would like the city clerk to look at the cost of each neighborhood council. I think the amount that's being used is too, is too high. Uh, we can do our neighborhood council election with less money. We have done it before. We would use the city assistance, but I don't think it should cost one thousand dollars for elections in each neighborhood council when you talk about the amount of people that comes out and vote. What is needed is more outreach from the city and from the, the city elections office. That's it.
Thank you. Sean Simons, and then Nina Royale?
I'm Sean Simons from the North Area Council. Um, I think when some of the numbers came out about the budget, you saw a lot of faces just kind of shaking their heads. Um, for my election, I, I won with a landslide of forty-five votes, and we gave out free hot dogs.
That's a lot.
Yeah. Uh, we ran our own elections, yeah.
That's a lot.
Um, I think that, uh, if, if, uh, our budgets are restored to the forty-five thousand dollars, and if we had an additional ten thousand dollars that was set aside for our elections that we could run, uh, I think that you would see that we'd be able to integrate the outreach that is so necessary and running our own elections and still be saving the city, what, a million point five? I think that these forty-five people that came out to vote for me, if they could have the twenty thousand dollars per-headed cost for them to come out to vote, they'd prefer that than the hot dogs. Thank you.
Nina, after Nina, we have Cindy Clegorn.
Good morning, Nina Royale, Vice President of Outreach, Sunland Tanga Neighborhood Council. Thank you very much, Richard, for your support, uh, restoring our budget. Dunn does a good job. We did a fantastic job on our elections, and we did it for eight thousand dollars. We had people that are trained, uh, election assistants, of which Mark Siegel was one of them, who also volunteered for Northridge and the other neighborhood councils. They did a good job. I think that we can do it for less, turn it back to Dunn. Thank you.
Good morning.
Okay. Uh, after Cindy, we have David Melville.
Good morning. Thank you very much, um, for all your support to neighborhood councils. We really appreciate it. I wanted to, uh, let you know, I served on the Neighborhood Council Review Commission, and when we, um, deliberated with regards to the city clerk taking over the elections, it was because of their already existing system that we could just shift over in the non-election year and just use the structure that they have. But it was always intended, as I recall, that the volunteers would continue. They have the expertise and the knowledge to, as the structure that already exists, and they were just gonna shift it over to help us out, and this would lend credibility to our, uh, process and then take some of that pressure off. We still have the outreach, we still have, uh, the volunteers. We have a, a wealth of volunteers out there who don't wanna be on neighborhood council boards, but they are sure right there to help when it comes to election time, and we need to tap in and continue to use those. So I just wanted to let you know.
There were, uh, two other objectives. One was objectivity in the election process, and the other was, um, standardization.
Standardization, yes.
Thank you, Bon. Uh, those were the other two reasons, but, uh, thank you for that.
Thank you.
After David, we have Billy Hayes.
Uh, hi, I'm David Melville. I'm with the Independent Shakespeare Company, and I wanted to thank you for, um, uh, supporting restoring, uh, uh, funding to the forty-five thousand dollar level. Our organization is funded by four neighborhood councils. We produce the Shakespeare Festival in Barnstall Park, uh, which attracts about twelve thousand people each year. Uh, it's admission-free, so it reaches a really, uh, wide cross-section of the public and a very diverse cross-section. Also, with neighborhood council support, we, uh, we were able to provide some programming in elementary schools. Um, and the funds that we receive goes to paying salaries of theater actors who don't make very much money, so that goes directly back into the economy. So, um, I, it's critical to, to have this funding from the neighborhood council, and, uh, I just, I'm here to represent that and tell you that's what is at, is at stake. It's organizations like ours and, uh, the, uh, that really need the neighborhood council support, so thank you.
Thank you. Uh, after Billy, we have Erica Gallo. Is it Gallo or Gallo?
Gallo.
Gallo, okay.
Good morning. Excuse me. Good morning, my name is Billy Hayes. I'm Vice President for the Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council. Uh, being here at this committee meeting this morning, I'm just struck by the fact that we have thousands of volunteers that are part of the city that the city don't wanna use. It is, it's incredible to me that we're talking about hiring temporary people when we already have people like the neighborhood council who would be more than willing and more than helpful and to fill in these gaps. And I think it's up to the city, uh, the city clerk to make that outreach to, so join this thing. We have to think outside the box on how we do stuff and not the city business as usual, because that's not gonna work anymore. We're in a whole different time, and I just think that that's what has to be done, and that's what needs to be taken into consideration.
Thank you, Billy. After Erica, we have Lorna Ward.
Good morning, council member. Um, I, my name is Erica Gallo, Vice President of the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council. First of all, I would like to thank you for your support of the neighborhood councils. As you can see, this is a very small percentage of the total individuals that are volunteers in the city. We are really the experts in volunteerism, and I think that we're willing to, we're willing to do what it takes to make this work. And we're willing to take our cut. We understand everybody has to, but we wanna pitch in. Um, I wanna point out that before and after city clerk took over, there really wasn't much of a difference between the turnout that we received as voters. So if that money was to go somewhere, I, it should go where it's needed, to the community, which is what our purpose is, and, um, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I, maybe I should say that, uh, I have no doubt that if we spent four point nine million dollars additional money, that there would be more voters. Uh, but, um, we're in a crisis situation, and now is not the time to expend, uh, dollars creating a Cadillac election process when, right now, we can get by with a VW. Um, after Lorna, we have Dale Gibson.
Good morning, I'm Lorna Ward. I'm Chair of the Empowerment Congress Central Area Neighborhood Development Council, and we have been doing our own elections for some time, and in fact, with what has been going on with the city clerk, uh, they're pretty much going by our bylaws, which means that here you have volunteers that came up with a system that's going to work. And I think that if they use a lot more of the volunteerism coming from the communities, that it would be a lot better, and that they should do it by regions, and by doing that, uh, you have a lot more going for you with the ninety neighborhood councils.
Thank you. Dale?
Uh, yes, sir. Dale Gibson, uh, new president of Foothill Trails District Neighborhood Council and your neighbor, and been in your office and worked with, with, uh, John De La Rosa. Um, I would just like to reiterate, if we could cut that money down for the elections, I, I appreciate you supporting us for funds for our neighborhood council, but, uh, we were talking, ten thousand dollars per neighborhood council earmarked, let us handle it. Uh, we could do our own outreach, and the rest of the money could go back to police and firemen and people that don't need their jobs cut, and let us handle it. We'd love to work with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, uh, we're gonna continue this meeting until Monday at eight-thirty. Uh, let me say that it appears that we, uh, we have some, uh, belt tightening to do within the, uh, two point two million that the Budget Committee has recommended for the city clerk at this time. Uh, but I believe that the city clerk, uh, has, uh, understands now, uh, what we are trying to get to. Um, and with regard to delaying the election, it really hinges on the savings. If there's savings that are generated, then, uh, we might, uh, defer the election. Uh, but if, if there's a way that we can drive savings without deferring the election, that would be an optimum situation, particularly for the city clerk that has to focus on the municipal elections. Um, so that's, that's our challenge. Uh, but I do think, uh, there's a lot of bells and whistles in, uh, the two point two million that we just cannot afford, given our economic situation, and I would plead with the city clerk to work with us over the weekend to, uh, drive that figure down. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned until Monday.